The informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:29 PM on this 23rd day of January 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please tally the roll call.
Ms. Manning, can you mark that you're present?
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So Madam Chair, all board members are present and Ms. Manning is attending via Zoom due to illness.
Thank you.
Please note, members of the public are able to observe the School Board meetings through live streaming on schoolboard.vb schools dot com forward slash meetings forward slash live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. We appreciate, we appreciate you. Do any board members have anything to report for admin matters and reports?
Ms. Melnick, you may want to note that you're using a new system tonight, so if people see you struggling, we have problems that you're working under a new system.
Okay. Um, yes, Ms. Riggs.
I just would like to thank Mr. Jack Freeman for making sure his team put in these handy dandy drawers for us up here. So, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Desk space. Yeah, it's great. And what the public might be viewing right now is the new system that we are using, the new computer system that will help with our, well, you'll be able to see our attendance, you'll be able to see our votes, we'll be able to make motions via the computer now seconds. And we are happy to be back in the 21st century. No more raising of the hands. So I have a couple. If nobody else has anything? Okay. Number one, School Board Committee assignment modifications for term ending 30 June of this year. We have no modifications to committee, to committee work. And I have a sign up sheet for one-to-one meetings with Dr. Robertson. So if you'll pass that down, we'll start to the right this time with Mr. Callen, and it can pass it down.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It was suggested in some meetings last week that we consider meeting in pairs.
Yes.
And so I'm absolutely in favor of that idea as well as individual meetings. So I'm not sure how we want to handle that, but members could note if they'd be willing to meet in pairs.
Sure.
We could do that as well.
If everybody is willing to meet in pairs, if you see a good time that fits and somebody else has taken that spot and you'd like to meet in pairs, feel free to do that. Okay. All right, excellent.
And Ms. Manning has her hand raised.
Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. Madam Chair, did you say that there are no changes to committee assignments?
There, for right now, there are not.
Oh, because we talked about changing one of our discipline committees?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. And I was talking about the standing committees, but we did, we did modify our discipline committees. We are now on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday schedule and, I'm sorry? Yes. Um, but not right now. Right. Yes, when we get to action, we'll vote on that, but that is the only modification we had, Mrs. Manning, for discipline hearings.
Okay, I don't see that on Action. Is that on for tonight or?
Well, we, we will add it. We have, we have now four modifications to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Riggs.
So if there's no modifications to the committees, how are you going to fill in the empty Governance Committee seat?
So I talked about that with Mrs. Lanetti. So here was, here was the one thing. We, I had three, three committee assignments that I had, I had some, I had extra committee assignments by default. And so I gave up three of those committees and we had one board member who was willing to take on the Audit Committee where I currently serve as Chair. That committee only meets quarterly and there's only one meeting between, there's only one meeting between now and July. And whoever steps on, will be a brand new person, would also be responsible for the auditor's evaluation. And so it was not, I didn't think it was quite fair that somebody would attend one, one committee meeting and then be responsible for her evaluation. So I just left the committee as, as it is. And so I discussed with Mrs. Lanetti yesterday, because I am Chair of the Audit Committee and I represent, that, that puts me in the Governance Seat if we were able to leave it as is until July. And she did not think that that was a problem.
So that's not a problem not to fill in that fifth seat all of a sudden?
The, well, it would be empty. We talked about that and we've had situations where you didn't have a person one. Or the other choice is Audit needs to elect somebody new to be their Chair and that can't happen till they meet into their next meeting. So that's another option. Audit could.
But you're going to be having Governance Meetings before that?
Perhaps.
Most likely, because we'll be working on the evaluation of the Superintendent, all of those things. That's what, that's what Governance does. So you have all of that that you have to do. So you're going to be missing a major, a person there. You need five people, not just four.
That's fine. Within, in April, we're going to have to elect a new Chair. That's what we'll do. And then I'll just slide in as Chair of the Board. Yes.
If the new Chair who's elected into the Audit Committee is already a Chair, then it's not going to add another Governance Member. So it doesn't seem to be an urgency, because we're going to have the possible same outcome.
It was the lesser of two evils. Honestly, it's not fair to stick in a brand new person onto an Audit Committee and then be responsible for that person's evaluation when you have not worked with that person for a year.
I haven't finished yet. I was the one that put in my name for Audit, okay? And I have been to a couple of the Audit Meetings. So I, it's not like I'd be brand new. So I have sat in some of them. So, I mean, that's up to y'all, that adds another meeting to me, but it also takes away the, the essence of what a Governance Meeting, Governance Committee should be.
So you can be, we'll just. All right. Ms. Weems?
We're forgetting to use our high tech.
I'm looking.
I, I just want to point out that I'm the only one that used it this round. I just want to point that out. Mr. Callen, you'll probably use it next. Okay, just want to point that out.
Hey, wait, I got to point out, I don't have mine. He's fixing it.
Mm-hmm, okay, well. Okay, so I would just suggest that the Chair get the committees done and present it to us so that we may vote on it and have it written down so that we all know. I think Ms. Riggs was also talking about the Governance Committee being one less also. So can you just get it, write it out, send it to us this week or whatever, and we'll vote on it next meeting? Thank you.
Thanks. Take care of that. All right. Anything else? All right, let's move on to the Preliminary Operating Budget Presentation. Welcome, Crystal Page, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, School Board Members and Dr. Robertson. In today's presentation, we will provide the School Board with additional information as it relates to building the SEON. In your Board Packet, you have the slides and I would ask that you take notes on each slide as I go through the presentation to assist you when we get to the question slide. The agenda for this presentation is shown on this slide. I will update you on the work that has been completed since January 9th. I will review the impact of ESAR-funded items that were approved or denied for inclusion in the operating budget and also go over where we are with outside the base requests. I will provide a high-level look at reductions at the department level, go through the budget balancing process to date, review the revenue sharing formula scenarios of one, two, and three cent potential real estate rate reductions, and finally, review the next steps. Again, we have multiple Board Workshops in February for the Board to help Administration build the budget. As we go through each area today, we are looking for feedback on the process thus far and input on areas to explore in preparation for February 6th. I presented this information to you a couple of weeks ago and I wanted to review it with you again as we move into the rest of the presentation. This slide shows you the School Division's revenue sources. The first column shows you the adopted fiscal year 2023-24 budget. This is what the School Board approved prior to the state's final budget. The second column is our amended fiscal year 2023-24 budget, which includes additional revenue from the state's final budget of approximately $3.4 million. The third column is our projected fiscal year 2024-25 revenue by source. And the last column shows you the variance between our amended 23-24 budget and the most recent estimate of revenue sources for 24-25. You can see that we are showing an overall increase in revenue of approximately $20.4 million with the majority of the increase coming from the city. Also note that we are seeing only a small increase in state revenue of $4.5 million with an offsetting decrease in state sales tax of $3.9 million. This nets out to be an overall increase from the state from our amended fiscal year 23-24 budget of approximately $545,000. I want to point out that this small increase in state revenue does not come close to the pace of inflation we are experiencing. Of note, the $20.4 million increase in funds over the last fiscal year represents a 2.2% increase in revenue. The current rate of inflation is 3.4%, meaning in current dollars, we have not kept pace with the cost of operations. We all know a major driver in the budget process is student enrollment. In my last presentation, I noted that projected student enrollment is a little over 62,000 students for fiscal year 2024-25. While enrollment has declined over the last five years and begins to flatten, please keep in mind that student needs are expected to have an increasing impact on our budget. We have seen and continue to see increases in economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, students with disabilities, students who experienced learning loss from the pandemic, as well as an increase in social emotional needs. The Governor, in addressing Virginia School Superintendents earlier this month, stated he had to continue to explain this concept of declining enrollments, but the needs of students has changed. Much work has been done by senior leadership in making recommendations for the SEON based on projected revenues. In a few moments, you will see our first phase of recommendations to address the outside of the base budget request. For the first time in several years, all Chief Officers were directed to inspect all personnel and non-personnel line items to determine areas where items could be reduced or frozen. Dr. Robertson and my team and I have met multiple times to review the Chief Officer submissions and decide how to proceed. In a few moments, you will see the results of that exercise. As I have shared before, all ESAR funds must be spent by September 30th, 2024. Given this deadline, we have reviewed all remaining ESAR encumbrances to determine which ESAR-funded resources and personnel are critical to retain next year. In a few moments, you will also see the result of that exercise. Given the uncertainty around revenue projections, Dr. Robertson has asked each Chief Officer to review every current vacancy within Central Office at the Coordinator and Below Position to be scrutinized against the critical need to fill. This discussion continues and decisions will be heavily based on available funding. As you know, the City Council has asked us to develop eight scenarios in the event they decide to reduce the real estate tax rate by one cent, two cents, up to seven cents. Today, we will share the budget areas we could explore at the one to three cents level. We cannot understate how important and valuable ESAR federal funds were and are to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The over $129 million in extra funds allowed us to introduce new program resources to address a fully remote and hybrid learning environment. It allowed us to secure additional resources to support the health and welfare of our staff and students. It allows us to reward staff for their incredible work through stipends and bonuses. It allowed us to expand our infrastructure to address environmental and safety needs and it provided us with the ability to expand staffing to address critical need areas. One note of importance, this third phase of this grant does have a requirement to spend at a minimum 20% or $16.5 million of the award on learning loss to continue to address the academic impact of lost instructional time and this is through the implementation of evidence-based interventions. Examples are being tutoring, summer school, and various instructional software. Know that over the past six months, we have been planning and preparing for this grant to end and yet thought it was important in this presentation to note how valuable these funds were and how much they will be missed. This slide reflects positions currently funded with ESAR and then what positions are being proposed to be included in the operating budget for fiscal year 24-25. Overall, there were 29 positions authorized to be funded with ESAR and we currently have five and a half vacancies. Going forward into fiscal year 24-25, 26 of those 29 positions were requested to be included in the operating budget and 11 of these 26 positions have been approved to date. The two base positions are vacant and were not included moving forward. The Virtual Learning Center Program and related positions of Graduation Coach, Instructional Text Specialist, School Off, and School Office Associate to 12-month were reviewed thoroughly based on enrollment and overall need for the program as it existed. It was determined there were positions that were not needed. The Coordinator for the Virtual Learning Center was approved. One Graduation Coach was requested for 24-25 and that was not approved and believed the duties could be absorbed by another position in the operating budget. One 12-month Office Associate was requested, again, that was not approved with duties being absorbed by an existing Office Associate. Two English ESL teachers are currently filled and were requested. Based on our increasing ESL population, these positions were approved. Two Family Outreach Reps are currently filled and were requested. Based on existing need, only one was approved. Two General Assistants for the Base Program are currently vacant and were requested, but were not approved. Currently, there are eight and a half Math Coaches funded and filled. Nine were requested, seven were approved, and I believe there were three new Math Coach positions requested for outside the base. Only one of the three outside the base positions were approved for the proposed 24-25 budget. These coaches are deemed critical in the roles they play from an instructional perspective. A 12-month Office Associate for the Welcome Center currently funded and filled was requested but was not approved as these duties can be absorbed within the office. Two School Counselors are currently funded and filled. Only one was requested and it was not approved. We have existing vacant School Counselor positions existing in the operating fund. There were three Teacher Induction Specialists currently funded and filled. Three were requested, none were approved. The employees in these positions have endorsements and certifications and can pursue other opportunities within the Division. This slide lists non-personnel items that were or are funded with ESAR funds. Overall, almost $11 million was requested for fiscal year 24-25. To date, we have approved $5 million, a little over $5 million. So we have reduced expenditures previously funded with ESAR by almost $6 million. I believe you are familiar with the CHKD Bridge Program. Mr. Jameson has briefed the Board on the success of this program and we have approved the contract going forward for $200,000. Funding for Coaches Pay to Support Professional Learning was approved at 50% of the original request. 100% of concurrent stipends was approved. These are stipends for teachers who teach virtually and face-to-face. Funding for Tutoring Services at the secondary level was reduced by $5 million. We did pick up this funding for this service in our All-In Plan Tutoring Grant. 100% of the Communities in Schools Contract was approved due to the unique set of services provided and their ability to work directly with schools, students, and families to individualize support strategies to meet specific needs. 100% of funding for the expanded summer learning opportunities was approved. With the learning loss experienced by many students, summer learning opportunities are believed to be essential to close the learning gap. 100% of the FEV Online Tutoring Platform was approved. Again, Tutoring Services are also believed to be critical to the learning loss issue. 100% of the cost of Google Workspace was approved. Google Workspace is required for us to have Google Student Accounts and manage Chromebooks. Google has been providing these services for free at one point, but has subsequently decided to charge for these services. 100% of the cost of Nusella Software was approved and that will be funded within the textbook fund, not the operating fund. We did not approve the costs requested for Numeracy Tutors. 100% of secondary summer performing arts camps was approved. 100% of the cost of translation interpretation services was approved. These services are essential to the Division due to the increasing number of ESL students and families. 100% of the Virtual Virginia Tuition was approved. We do still have an enrollment of students who take advantage of Virtual Virginia courses. And we did not approve the funding for the Division Zoom License, so we have, since we have the ability to use Microsoft Teams for virtual meetings. Each year, as part of the pre-budget process, we ask Chief Officers to submit their budget for the following year to include any reductions, eliminations to existing items, as well as cost increases for existing items and new items. Recall in an earlier slide, I noted our current budget represents a 2.2% increase. To keep up with inflation, which currently stands at 3.4%, we would need an additional $11 million in revenues to be funded similar to the last fiscal year. I think it is important to note the $11 million gap is attributed to lower state revenues and not to local revenues. Know that outside the base requests are heavily affected by inflation, which is why we are having to make difficult decisions about how to use projected revenues. This slide shows you our most up-to-date outside the base request. It provides you with the original items approved in the first column. The second column are those items that remained approved and those that have been cut to date and the related variance, if any, is shown in the last column. I just want to go over some of the items we are adjusting, not all of them, and give you an opportunity to review the remaining items listed. For Math Coaches, I did cover that when I went through the ESAR positions that moved forward. Behavior Intervention Teacher Base Program, that was also covered when I went through the ESAR positions earlier. Teacher Assistant Base Program was covered when I went through ESAR positions. This, this position was never filled. The Requesting Convert Special Ed Assistant TEAs to FTEs was not approved. The $921,000 cost of this is related to benefits an FTE would receive versus a TEA. We currently approve TEAs for these positions and the thought is that as long as we continue to have TEAs in these positions, we will be able to provide the appropriate special ed services. The last adjustment on this page is the Contracted Services for Secondary Tutors and I covered this earlier in the presentation, the $5 million is going to be funded with the All-In Tutoring Grant. On this slide, we adjusted the request for the Adult Learning Center. The request was to convert various positions from TEAs to FTEs. While we have discussed the option over the last couple of years, the Adult Learning Center has operated with TEAs in these positions for many years and some of the positions are grant-funded. The additional cost request is related to benefits and we believe fiscal year 2024-25 is not the time to convert these positions. We removed the request to convert Instructional Specialists in the Department of Teaching and Learning from 11-month to 12-month. Instructional Specialists have been 11 months for a number of years and again, not the budget year to make this move. We reduced the request for Office Supplies. For the Legal Department, we believe we can absorb this increase in our operating budget without adding to it. We removed the request for 15 Bus Drivers. We understand the desire to have trainees in the pipeline ready to take bus driver positions when they are available. We have recently developed a process in conjunction with Transportation to ensure that they continue to have the allocations they need to fund bus driver vacancies. We removed the request for additional Bus Assistants. We have several vacancies for Bus Assistants at this time and do not feel it is the time to add additional allocations. We reduced the request for additional Elementary Security Assistants from 30 to 15. We have been phasing these positions in over the last few years. In discussion with the Chief Officer, it is believed we can still make progress in this area with 15 additional positions. So this last slide on outside the base request, the top part is in blue is the Athletic Fund. Please note, there are increased costs for this fund related to officials, uniforms, equipment, et cetera. We did reduce instructional supplies for the middle school and high school and therefore, reduce the transfer from the operating budget to the Athletic Fund by this $94,000. Recall in the agenda slide, I shared that each Chief Officer was asked to carefully review their existing budgets to identify reductions each could make that could be overcome by making adjustments to existing processes. As of Friday, January 19th, we have identified over $1.4 million in savings that we will be able to use in other areas to support the SEON. These reductions are outside of ESAR reductions and we previously covered of almost $6 million. Cuts included in this total fall into categories such as professional development, other purchase services, and technology. Our current deficit or shortfall is $3,062,366. This is based on the approximate $20 million in revenue from all sources. The 2% raise that was effective January 1st and per calculations by Siegel related to compensation, we have included a one and a half step increase to the teacher pay scale with no change to the starting salary, which equates to approximately $6.1 million with benefits. And we have included 1% or 1 and 1/2% step increases for the Unified Scale with a change to minimum wage for our lowest wage employees to $15 an hour. Recall that on the Unified Scale, certain years of service have a 1% between steps and others have a 1 and 1/2 between steps. The other significant item we had to include was the change in the contribution method for VRS Hybrid Plan Employees. Beginning July 1st, 2024, the defined benefit and the voluntary contribution will be uncoupled. Currently, the maximum contribution for hybrid employees is 16.62%, which is VRS employer contribution rate for most of our employees. So we have been budgeting the employer contribution for hybrid employees as we do other employees on the professional scale. Beginning in fiscal year 24-25, the defined benefit contribution of the Hybrid Plan will be given a percentage separate from the potential increases associated with a voluntary contributions component for hybrid employees. This change is due to the increase in the eligibility of new hybrid employees that are hired and choose to contribute up to their 4%. This decision created an additional liability for the School Division for the upcoming fiscal year and going forward. Based on the current estimated number of hybrid employees who have voluntary contributions, the increase in the employer contribution for fiscal year 24-25 is approximately $7 million. Also noted here are the previously approved outside the base requests as well as proposed cost savings measure to increase the staffing ratio at the secondary level by .5. The increase in class size noted here should have a minor impact that can be mitigated through how teachers are scheduled and how students are scheduled as part of the master schedule process which begins in earnest in March. As we look towards in what areas we could explore, should the city decide to reduce the real estate tax rate? As we look towards in what areas we could explore, should the city decide to reduce the real estate tax rate? We are striving to strike a balance. We have identified areas we could consider making additional cuts to cover the loss in local revenue. Recall every one cent cut is equivalent to three point seven million dollars based on the current real estate assessment rate. It is important to note that each item under each cent reduction area are considerations only. For example, the board has heard on two occasions in past budget discussions. That examining the middle school schedule can result in a savings of approximately four million dollars. Which is eerily close to the cost of a one cent cut in the real estate tax rate. When we get to three cents, we could consider the savings resulting from examining the number of middle school sports. And examining fees for secondary sports. Again, these are only potential considerations to explore in greater detail in our February workshops. We do not want anyone to view these considerations and make any conclusions that this is where we will make the cuts. We still need to build out scenarios for four through seven cents. And in these areas, we could potentially be looking at cutting personnel. These are only considerations and the board will drive which areas you wish administration to explore. When presenting these options on February sixth. Finally, we will have until the end of February to finalize our budget. And we are hoping to have guidance from the city council by that time on potential tax reductions. This is the last meeting with the school board prior to producing the CION. Please share your thoughts and questions with Dr. Robertson, all board members and me on or before next Sunday, January twenty eighth. We recognize this is a tight turnaround, but will we need to be able to review all the requests? Provide a response and develop the CION by Wednesday, January thirty first. To meet our print and board agenda deadline for the very February sixth CION presentation. Again, we are roughly three point one million dollars in the hole and must present the board with a balanced budget on February sixth. Meaning we need to find additional savings of three point one million dollars over the next week. Administration is confident that with board input, we can find these savings. In a way that results in the smallest loss in services to our students and community. As mentioned, crossed over in the general assembly is scheduled for February fourth. While this is prior to presenting the C- CION to the school board, it does not give us sufficient time to update CION and go to print. I do plan to update the board on February sixth on any information that impacts us coming out of the general assembly. There is talk that school divisions will receive additional funding out of the general assembly session. So we need to wait and see and make plans on our priorities. Of how you want to utilize any additional funding received. Whether it's compensation or restoration of budget cuts or a combination thereof. We will then proceed with workshops every Tuesday in February to further update the school board and continue to receive your input. The general assembly is to adjourn March ninth. The hope is that a state budget is delivered when the general assembly adjourns on that date. We will present a proposed budget and capital improvement program budget for approval to the school board on March fifth. And then present what is approved by the school board to city council sometime in April. City council will need to approve by May fifteenth. Thank you for your time and I will open it up for questions.
Madam Chair, I wonder if I might just offer a comment.
Certainly.
So I know there's a lot of information that you've received, uh, and so what, I, I think the mindset I would like you to have is. We're, we are where we need to be right now and what we needed from you is from what you've heard tonight. Um, and we need to hear this by Sunday. From what we've provided to you tonight. What do you like that you've seen? What are some opportunities that you didn't see that we could explore? Uh, any questions you have? Because when we, I'm confident we can develop, uh, the CION to provide you February sixth where we, the budget balance is zero. Um, and we're still, um, as a team looking at every, we're uncovering, opening every drawer. Um, and uncovering everything to determine where savings could be. Uh, I share with principals and teacher groups that I've met with in the last couple of weeks that. To me, February sixth is kind of be a, kind of be a worst case scenario that you see because at that point in time. The city hasn't made any other, um, decisions, the state hasn't made any other decisions. Um, and so, you know, I, I want them to understand that. We're gonna make the right decisions based upon your input, your feedback and what your thoughts are. That can continue to provide the school division with everything it needs to succeed. So we are not looking at this as, oh my gosh, this is dire straits. That's not the outlook the team has. The outlook the team has is this is an opportunity for us to become more efficient. And so that's the way we're approaching this and really what we need from you, because I know there's a lot on your plate. And there's other presentations to come forward is just an acknowledgement, we really want to know what you're thinking. And because you're all probably thinking some of the same things by emailing. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Melnick and myself and Crystal and copying everybody, then everybody sees what those thoughts are. And then the process will be on February sixth, we'll start with, here are all the questions we received from you. And here are all the answers and then here's the CION. So I hope that helps.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Yeah, um, just briefly, I, I wanted to share, uh, you asked what we liked and what we didn't like. I will probably reach out, uh, to you and Mr. Jameson just to hear more about how, uh, the cuts. With the CHKD bridge program are going to impact services or, you know, possibly. Um, I appreciate looking at the duplicate technology software. Zoom is more, I don't know, I like Zoom better. But we have teams and we're making some of those same cuts at the state level. I'm wondering if there are other places where we have duplicate, uh, software programs that. We like some better, but we have duplicates going. I know in elementary school, they have like Class Dojo and Seesaw and something else for. Uh, communicating between parents and schools. Do we need to have three? Can we just pick one? Um, similarly with some of those kind of reading programs, do we need Smarty Ants? And whatever the other four things are, can we bring it down? I don't know what those, uh, price tags look like to know what kind of a, a impact it would make, but. I feel like the duplicate technology is an easier place for me to swallow some of the, uh, cuts that aren't, none of them are easy, but. Might be easier there.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
So, um. If we do get additional funding from the state, which looks like we might, I would like to make it clear that. My priority first of all would be, um, teacher pay raises. I know they may not be as big as they were last year, but we need to continue on that line. Um, and I also, I don't want to cut class sizes if we can help it, um, on any level. Um, I go with, when I go to visit the schools and you walk in the, in the, in the classrooms. Sometimes there's so many students, you can't hardly walk around to, you know, to interact or see what they're doing. Cause they're crowded in there, especially on the, in the middle school. So, um, those are the two things that I would like to preserve or, or let you know those are my priorities. Um, and of course then we take a look at the cuts that we've made and, um, some of them I can understand. But I, I hope that we'll be able to look at those and be able to restore some of those if we get additional funding, but. Those are my priorities. Thank you.
And I, I wonder if I can, uh, piggyback off what Ms. Anderson said because. What we're providing to you is recommendations. This board will guide the decision-making of what's the final decision and, um. To her point about new funds that come in. We'll be looking for your direction after March fifth to say, as new funds come in, what are your priority areas? And then as new funds come in, we'll present recommendations to the board and then the board will say, yes, I like that one. Hmm, I'm not sure about that one, but it will be information we provide to you that then you direct us. On how we want to, uh, use those funds.
Okay, Ms. Martin.
Um, the, one thing that jumps out at me is these cuts to the ALC. Um, because the quicker we can get someone into a GED. The more access they have to workforce and employability. And the more immediately they can begin to contribute to our city revenue streams. So a five hundred thousand dollar investment not doing these cuts. Could generate more than that in tax revenue in a matter of twenty four months, thereby increasing our bottom line in the short term. Um, I'm gonna send you all an email kind of against that backdrop, but that's the one thing that jumped out at me that I'd like us to find a resolution, maybe through workforce council, maybe through grants.
We agree and just to clarify, the ALC positions are not cuts. They were. Part of the budget process that we did se- uh, several months ago is I asked all the chief officers, look at your temporary employment agreement people. Temporary employment agreement people save us when we can't find someone to take an FTE. Uh, but if we have a temporary employment agreement who's been in that same position for three and four years. Then shouldn't we build that person into the budget as an FTE? So ALC is not gonna lose any staff. Their request to turn those TEAs into FTEs. At this point is not approved, but we would not allow them to lose staff for sure. And I was in a meeting yesterday, uh, with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Roundtable that I've created with, uh, with Trenace. Uh, in Delcino, Miles and Scott Miller and I've got a, uh, I have a conversation coming up with Sean Avery. And Christina Book, Brooks about a large sum of money that's available from the workforce council. To support teacher pipeline development. So I'll be in contact with them this week to find out how we can access that money. It's grant funded. Because then we could use those funds, it would make perfect sense to match those funds to the requests in ALC Tech Center. Uh, ATC, the TCE Labs. So, yes.
So it, it does concern me in terms of economic stability for our staff and actually for our community. Where we do have people in temporary non-benefit positions. Now, we're in a, a unique position where we often have military spouses that get benefits through childcare. And things like that, but, but that, that economic instability for some families also does concern me. Um, and so in the long term, I think we need to find a solution to that as well. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brown.
All right, um, so I am going to say that my, um, my top priorities are gonna be academic achievement. Safety and well-being of our students and then, um, my next layer there is going to be, um. The needs of our, our staff, um, as far as increases go. Um, I just want to make sure that we are. Making sure that we're giving our students what they need also. Um, you know, we did a lot. It was raises last year and then the state did come with the two percent increase and, um. You know, we had kind of already started to make, um, the pay there whole and so. Um, I, I see the revenue sharing formula, um, changes and. I'm definitely open to the evaluation of what we mean by the middle school start times if it's going to save, um, funds. But, um, I, I don't know about the pay to play, uh, for students for sports. Um, you know, I, I think that's gonna really, uh, be a challenge for some families. And I think that that's a really healthy outlet, uh, for a lot of our students. Um, so that, I don't think I would be able to get behind. Um, I do have a, um, a couple of questions and I don't really need answers right this second. But, um, you know, I've noticed in looking at historical, um, staff of our school system. And I know that there's certain needs, um, that we have with our students. Um, but I've noticed that there has been, you know, we talked about declining enrollment often, but. The staff is double also what it was at, at one point. And I know that we, part of that is attributed to, uh, decrease in staff size, um, sorry, classroom size. And an increase in some of the support staff, but I'm, I would like to, um, make sure that we're measuring. Any of the specialist roles to ensure that there is an act, a positive. Relationship to academic achievement and student outcomes. Um, to make sure that each of those positions are really benefiting us. And then my other question is, um, about opioid abatement funds. Have you all already, um, included these? Um, okay.
So we have received and all that came in, we have received a settlement for Juul funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from that settlement, that revenue was booked in December of this fiscal year, so it is in our revenue accounts for this fiscal year. And Kami, correct me if I'm wrong, I think opioid is going to the city?
The opioid is the city's, uh, and there's, you would have to talk with the city about how they're going to spend it. Juul is the vaping which has limitations. There's another one we've talked about which has some limitations as to how you can spend it.
So, um, there is currently a, um, bipartisan bill in the general assembly. Um, you know, in relation to our legislative packet for, um, a recovery school. And I, I do think that perhaps, um, we could earmark a portion of. Those funds, um, since that is specifically related, um. That, that's something that I would like to see, um, because as our legislators are looking at this, there is some question as to. What we're doing also, so anyway, um, that is all for right now. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Manning, because Mrs. Anderson's already had a turn, so we're just gonna take Mrs. Manning first and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, what do we need to do to make a request? Um, I've been hearing about these abatement funds that city council has received. What do we need to do to request, uh, that we receive these funds? Has there been any conversation with city council yet by, uh, or with city staff, by our school staff?
To my knowledge, Mrs. Manning, we, uh, the, I know the city had some, um, meetings regarding how to spend that funding. Otherwise you would have to speak with them or send a request over to spend how they, but I believe they had public hearings on it earlier this, or last year, late last year. And that related to school year.
Okay, I would like to have those conversations with city council. I'll be happy to reach out to. Some, um, some, some members of city council if everyone else would like to do the same thing.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Weems. I know, I, I know you're last, you're, you're next, but there are people who haven't had a chance to speak yet. Mrs. Weems.
Um, yes, um, Ms. Manning and colleagues, um, Ms. Riggs and I met with the mayor and the vice mayor. Specifically asking for some of this, um, abatement money. And we were told that they would look at it and get back with us, but I think now what we need to do is really push forward. All of us need to call our city council if we need to do a resolution and send, that would probably be my preference. To write up a resolution. I'll be glad to do that with, um, Mr. Saltner. And, and put that on to send over to them because they do have the money. And of course they have different people also wanting the same money, but what, but. As I was explaining to the mayor, this whole opioid epidemic is kind of like Two Face. You're, you're, you're dealing with opioids with adults. Who have lot more services and then you're dealing with opioids of our teenagers that are, who are in our schools. Who have zero to nothing access to any service or any options of recovery. And so, um, I think it's time to put some pressure on them and, um, perhaps send a resolution over. Um, also with the Juul, um, I would like, uh, some sort of written statement, Ms. Lanetti. Um, to see how those are limited because I think that there's probably some room that we can also use Juul. Abatement funds for.
Juul is not limited.
Okay, so if it's not limited.
Other one that we're not authorized to talk about.
So, so if that's not limited and we already have money, then, um, I'll be asking then, um, for that to be earmarked. Earmarked for a recovery school for our kids. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I want the public to know and understand if you are watching us today. That the reason we're talking about cuts. Is because we were directed by city council to, to think about the fact that they're thinking about cutting our taxes. Um, one cent, two cent, three cent, four cent, different scenarios. And I realize it's, it's an election year and that's a popular thing to do for some people. They, they want their taxes cut. But I want to remind everybody that the reason we're making, look, you know, I, we, we get about half of the cities. I, we, we get about half of the city's budget to run our schools. And we're talking about fifteen thousand employees, sixty-four thousand students. Um, if you, if you want our schools to continue to run efficiently, um, and to con- to con- to continue to have class sizes that are reasonable, um, then you need to call city council and let them know that you're not happy with the fact that they're thinking about cutting taxes just because it's an election year. And what they're doing is they're making it difficult for our schools to be able to develop a budget so that we can run our schools, uh, for what people are accustomed to. People in Virginia Beach are accustomed to having a good school division. They're accustomed to having teachers who, who care about their students and, and class sizes that they can manage. Although class sizes are not what we want right now, we'd like to be able to cut cla- uh, cut, um, cut it, cut the number of students in a class. But, you know, a few years ago, we raised class sizes to be able to save some money. I don't ever wanna have to raise class sizes again for any reason. Um, so, parents, contact your city council person and let them know that, that, you know, if they're gonna cut the revenue, um, they need to look for some other places to cut it, not through the school budget. Thank you.
And before you step away, anybody else? Um, you gave a couple of examples about, uh, some scenarios. If city council does a one, two, or three cent reduction in real estate taxes, um, did you just do that for an example, or have you been given an indication that they might not go over three percent? Cause I know in our original budget formulation, we were going up to an eight cent reduction.
Seven cents. Uh, we just didn't have enough time to consider what might come with four, five, six, and seven. I think it's important, again, um, and we talked about this in senior staff. We certainly don't wanna trigger any overreaction to anyone.
Yeah.
And anytime you talk about middle school schedule, or you're talking about pay to play, or you talk about reducing number of sports, those programs are so important to our kids.
Right.
But, when we're trying to balance a budget, those are also big ticket items.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so, they will have to be considered. We're a long way from that decision.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, the three cent was, was a little frightening, so to Mrs. Anderson's point.
And we did, we did ask recently of just city budget staff, are you still all considering us showing all those, you know, thinking maybe as time has passed, they would say, no, let's just, they still wanna see all of it.
Okay, and that might work in our favor in the end, when they see just how debilitating that would be with the seven cent reduction in tax. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, our compensation study, phase two. Welcome Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer. And, um, will members of Segal be joining us via Zoom?
Yes, ma'am, they will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. Today, we are here to present the recommendations and considerations regarding the twenty-four, twenty-five salary structure updates conducted by consultants from Segal. As a refresher, the Department of Human Resources worked with Segal to conduct a comprehensive market study of the divisions' unified and instructional pay scales during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The review included comparisons between local and Northern Virginia school divisions and recommendations for budgetary considerations for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Today's presentation will provide considerations to complete phase two of the study. Today, to present this information virtually, we have again with us Dr. Paula Singer, who holds the position of Vice President at Segal. She comes to us with over thirty years of experience in the field of compensation, staffing, as well as other areas. Sharing the podium with Dr. Singer is Mr. Andrew Konzinski, who works as an associate consultant with Segal and has a background in compensation and statistical analysis. As always, we will address any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. Now I give you Dr. Singer.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you very much. Um, good afternoon, Dr. Robinson, members of the school board, Mrs. Woodhouse, Ms. Wood, and the audience attending this presentation. It is my pleasure to be back with you again this year. We are here to update the salary structure that was implemented last year to support the public schools' compass to twenty-twenty-five strategic framework goal. Number four of placing a priority on recruiting, retaining, and promoting a workforce representative of our diverse student population. First, I want to apologize for not being with you this year in person, as I have been in the past. But frankly, I have COVID, and you wouldn't really want me to be there. So, if my throat's a little off, then, you know, please forgive me. Um, I do miss being there, because I recall a number of really good conversations we had last year and during our discussions about the compensation philosophy. So, today, we're going to recap the work we accomplished during the twenty-two, twenty-three study. This is to familiarize everyone with the, uh, work we accomplished then, and that was completed, as well as orient new board members who have not been there in the past. So how many of you more or less were here last year and have heard about the study, either as new board members, um, members who might have been in the audience, cause they weren't sworn in, or of course, the, the board members who have stayed? Show of hands, just so I have a feel. Good, good, good. So I think everybody is probably at least familiar with the work that was done, but we'll recap it for you. Um, next, we'll discuss the goals of our current engagement. And after that, we'll walk through the various options that pertain to the uni- the unified, as well as the teacher pay scales, and provide the costing implications for each of them. As Mrs. Woodhouse said, please wait until the end, write down your questions, and we'll get to them after the presentation is over. Um, thank you. So, our agenda is to do the recap, discuss our, uh, project goals, look at adjustments to grade U-seven. Um, we have two parts to that, one about going to the, um, um, up, increasing the minimum salary, as well as to the, uh, the, um, I'm sorry, let me just get something to dry. Um, as well as to the unified pay scale as a whole, and then discuss a number of items with regard to the teacher pay scale assessment in terms of our market assessment, finding options, the impact of employees, and cost implication. Um, if we look at the next scale, please, thank you. Uh, here, we, you'll notice in the recap, we updated the compensation philosophy. We had many conversations around that. We looked at the market competitiveness of your current pay scale and recommended both structurally and policy changes to strengthen the division's competitive market positions and ensure internal pay equity. And of course, as you may recall, we spent a lot of time talking about Chesapeake and the relationship of, um, this division's, um, market pay in context of looking at it at your peers, but also a focus on Chesapeake. Next slide, please. So, continuing the recap, we made the following update. We moved positions on the lowest pay scale. Uh, we used to start at U-five, and we recommended bringing it up to U-seven. The creation of a new scale, and that was the professional level two, as you may recall, was added to the unified district, uh, unified scale, rather. And that consisted of essentially healthcare workers, the behavioral specialists, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social workers, and the psychologist were now on the new pay scale. We also implemented new step increases. The increases in the past were pretty random in between steps, so you might see one point seven, two point three, one point nine, two point eight. And we made it all uniform. And that was with the zero to fourteen years of experience at one percent between steps, and fifteen or more years of experience, it would be one point five percent between steps. We talked last year about making it all one point five to replicate and mirror the teacher's pay scale, but fiscal limitations kept the school board from doing that. In terms of the teacher's pay scale, again, you approved and implemented a consistent step increase of one point five percent for each year of experience. This provided over twenty-five million dollars in salary increases for the division's teachers. This averaged out to an average increase of between nine and ten percent. Next slide, please. So, the current goal of, um, this project is basically to improve upon the work that the school board implemented last year in a way that supports the workforce in a meaningful manner, while also being cognizant of this year's, um, budgetary lis- limitations. So, it was basically to look at the unified pay scale, um, so that we could create an entry level salary that was higher than it is now that would take employees in our lowest pay grades up to fifteen dollars an hour. And this was also at the recommendation of the school board. And we have modeled that and costed that out, and we'll throw it to you in a moment. We then looked at other options for the unified pay scale to stay competitive with the labor market, your peer group. Then, of course, we looked at the teacher pay scale and modeled various options to increase the pay scale, um, especially at the entry level, and remain competitive. Again, you will see charts and graphs like you did last year comparing to pe- peers, and especially to Chesapeake. And then develop costing scenarios, so that you can look at what will it cost, what would we take to meet into the options and implement them, um, that we will be discussing shortly. Next slide, please. So, here's the bottom line when it comes down to our lowest paid workers. We are hiring. We are always hiring. We have trouble retaining. We hire, retain, we try to retain, and then we hire more. Um, we're looking at our bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, custodian ones. And why are we always hiring? Because we have a high vacancy rate. We have recruitment difficulties, retention issues. These are our lowest wage earners, and we wanna bring them up to the highest level we can, and to a com- competitiveness, because lots of our peers in the local area, um, large organizations, small organizations, aren't looking for people with similar skills and qualifications. So, we are hiring, we're always hiring, it's about recruitment and retention. Next slide, please. So, the next slides will show you some recommendations and cost implications for making these adjustments. Next slide, thank you. So, as you can see, the current grade minimum, right now, on the U-seven scale for the bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, and custodian ones are fourteen forty-eight an hour. We are proposing, and I know that the school board has talked about this as well, of moving the new minimum of grade U-seven up to fifteen dollars an hour. This amounts to a fifty-two cents an hour increase, or a three point five nine percent. This is already on top of the hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy-five, the dollar seventy-five hour increase from moving these positions to grade U-seven, um, as part of the previous study. So, it's compounded, but yet if we look at it, it's really only taking them up to fifteen dollars an hour. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna turn this over to Andrew Konzinski, who is going to talk about some recommendations on the unified pay scale, as well as updates to the teacher scale. And then I'll come back at the end to summarize and take any questions you might have. Andrew, you're on mute. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Um, thank you, Paula, I appreciate that. Um, so on this slide, um, like Paula had mentioned, we're gonna be looking at, um, increasing pay for the U-seven, uh, starting rate from fourteen forty-eight, um, to fifteen dollars an hour. Um, you'll see the fourteen forty-eight highlighted in the, um, in the red box there, um, the fifteen dollar pay rate, um, on the right-hand side of this, of the slide. And, uh, and essentially, this is a three point five pers- three point five nine percent, excuse me, increase, um, to starting pay. Um, this will result in a realignment, um, of, of pay for over eight hundred and forty employees, um, for years of experience on grade U-seven. Um, please note that this cost includes, um, an experienced staff, uh, for current employees, as well as, uh, incremental costs. Um, the overall cost being, uh, roughly one point two million dollars. I believe it's one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, in addition to, uh, the changes, uh, to the U-seven grade, um, we have also put together two options for consideration for the rest of the unified pay scale as well. Um, we'll discuss these options and the associated cost implications on the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. Thanks. Uh, specifically, uh, we're looking at increasing the step percentages for zero to fourteen years of service. Um, currently, years zero through fourteen have a step increase of one percent, uh, then increasing to one point five percent, uh, for years fifteen and over. Um, to orient you to this first option, we've used grade U-seven, uh, but this option applies to all grades in the unified scale. Uh, moving from left to right, you'll see the years of experience, um, the current rate of pay as of January first, twenty twenty-four, and the current step increments. Um, you'll see here that years zero through fourteen have a one percent step increase. Um, next to these roles, uh, rows, you see, um, the new pay rates for U-seven, uh, with a starting rate of fifteen dollars an hour, and a one point two five percent increase for years zero through fourteen. Um, that one point two five percent increase is highlighted in the green box. Um, we'll be keeping the entry rates, uh, for all other grades as they currently are. So essentially, U-seven is the only grade that will receive an increase, um, to starting pay. Um, next slide, please. On this next slide, you'll see a similar layout for option two. Uh, this option, again, includes moving, uh, the starting pay rate to fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, the main difference will be the one point five percent increase between steps and the corresponding effect it has on pay rates for the U-seven grade. Um, again, you'll see the green box, um, highlighting the one point five percent here. Uh, this change would, in effect, uh, mirror the current teacher's pay scale, step percentages. Um, and again, um, the entry level rate for all other grades, uh, would stay the same for this option in the unified scale. Next slide. Uh, these options each have a compounding effect, uh, that provide different results to their overall cost. Uh, if you could go on to the next slide. Um, the cost for option one is eleven million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, while option two is nineteen million, four hundred and eight thousand. Um, these costs include the previously mentioned one point two million, uh, for the move to fifteen dollars an hour for the, uh, employees on U-seven, uh, as well as, um, the, uh, cost of benefits and cost of vacancies. So all of that is, is rolled into these numbers. Next slide, please, thank you. Um, the other area of focus for this presentation, uh, is an assessment of the teacher pay scale. Um, on the next few slides, we're gonna review recent changes to that scale. Uh, Virginia Beach's current competitive position relative to your peer divisions. Uh, we're gonna present the options that we've modeled, um, and the associated employee impact and cost implications of those. Let me go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so this first slide shows the movement of teacher pay scale, uh, of the teacher pay scale over, uh, its, uh, most recent iterations. Uh, you'll see approximately eighteen months ago, the scale had inconsistent steps between years of service, uh, resulting in the orange line that you see here. Uh, next, you will see the results, uh, of Segal and Virginia Beach's first engagement, uh, where we streamlined the increments, uh, for the years of service, resulting in the more consistent trajectory you see in July of twenty twenty-three. Um, that's represented by the green line there. Um, however, the initial starting salary was not increased at that time, uh, which resulted in a less competitive starting rate, uh, relative to the peers we'll review on the next few slides. Um, the most recent pay scale is denoted by the dotted blue line, um, starting with a salary of fifty-three thousand, five dollars, um, and ending at eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars for year thirty. Uh, while there's still work to be done in terms of starting salaries, uh, these adjustments have, uh, seen a positive impact on the overall pay for teachers. Uh, best example we can see of this is at year fifteen, um, where teachers' pay rates have moved from fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars to sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, that is an increase of nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars, or seventeen point one percent increase over a period of only eighteen months. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. On this slide, we see Virginia Beach's current pay rates at five-year intervals compared to current peer districts. You'll notice that currently, Virginia Beach is in fourth place for year zero and second place throughout the remaining intervals. Additionally, we have a comparison to where we stand in relation to Chesapeake, as well as how we compared last year. You'll see we've made significant gains at all intervals with the exception of starting pay, which has to do with not increasing it along with the other intervals in 2022, 2023. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this graph provides a visual representation of where Virginia Beach stood in relation to their peers as of July 1st, 2023. What you'll see here is Virginia Beach notated as the bold dotted line and the peer divisions in the colors corresponding to the legend below. If you recall, last year during Segal's presentation, we mentioned that by not increasing the entry rate for Virginia Beach, it would impact the division's standing in the market for entry-level teachers. And you can see that although Virginia Beach is in a good position relative to their peers, you do have the lowest starting salaries as of July 1st, 2023. That being said, even though Virginia Beach still lags behind Chesapeake, last year's structural changes did a good job of closing that gap. And you'll see Chesapeake is that sort of top line there that, that trends similarly to Virginia Beach, it's just incrementally above. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide is similar to the previous slide and reflects scales that are effective as of January 1st, 2024. This shows the effect of the 2 percent increase to the starting salary for Virginia Beach as well as other divisions if they were given. You'll note that Newport News and Norfolk did not increase their starting ranges, which helps place Virginia Beach more competitively amongst their peers. However, Virginia Beach is no more closer to the line with Chesapeake than it was this previous July. On a whole, you'll see that there is a consistent progression through each step, and Virginia Beach's scales no longer have the inconsistent step percentages like the majority of their peers, which you'll see here. Next slide, please. The focus of starting pay has led to the development of a number of options for the teacher's pay scale. Take a look on the next slide. We can take a look at those. Thank you. The first of these options is a 2 percent increase to entry-level pay. This is moving the entry level rate to $54,065 or a $1,060 increase. This increase has a cascading effect that moves through other steps in the pay scale. Next slide, please. Option two is a 3 percent increase to the starting salary, which moves the entry level rate to 54,595 or a $1,590 increase. On that cascading effect mentioned in option one applies here as well. And then on the next slide, we have option three, which is a 4 percent increase to the starting salary, and that moves the entry level rate to 55,125 or a $2,120 increase. If you move to the next slide, this slide pulls together the options listed on the previous three slides so that they can be seen side by side. On the left-hand side, you'll have five-year intervals, the current step rate, and then the three options laid out in the order of the percentage increases discussed previously. Next slide. This next slide will provide a couple of examples of the types of increases a teacher could expect to see based on the various options that we've presented previously. So if you could move to the next slide. This slide, I know it looks a little busy, but this slide illustrates the movement of teachers from the 2023-2024 scale to the proposed 24-25 scale. It includes each of the proposed options that we've discussed, plus a step for an additional year of service factored in as well. The first example we have provided is the increase amount a new teacher could expect to see moving from year zero, so a new teacher effectively to one year of experience. And so the teacher's pay would increase in this scenario from $53,005 to $54,876. So in total, that's a 3.5 percent increase resulting in a dollar increase of $1,871. And so what you'll see here is, is that represented in that red box in the upper left-hand corner. Option two, which is the 3 percent increase, I would see the teacher's pay increase from 55, or from $53,005 to $55,414. It's a 4.5 percent increase with a resulting dollar increase of $2,409. That is represented by that green box up top. And then option three, which is the 4 percent increase, would increase the teacher's pay to $55,952. That is a 5.5 percent increase resulting in an overall increase of $2,947. That same methodology applies for a teacher moving from 15 to 16 years of experience, or really from, from any step to the other in this scale. And those examples are provided in red, green, and purple. Sort of halfway down the page, you'll see another example of the, the dollar and the percentage increases a teacher could expect to, to make depending on the option that's chosen. Next slide, please. Thank you. Finally, we've provided the estimated cost implications for each scenario. So if you could flip to the, the next slide, we can take a look. Option one, again, is the 2 percent increase, provides a step for all employees, no additional percentage increase to the, to the structure. And the cost for that is 15,451,000. This is going to place Virginia Beach approximately 0.05 percent less than Chesapeake's current entry-level salary. Option two, which is the 3 percent adjustment, has a cost of 19,947,000. This would place Virginia Beach at 0.04 percent higher than Chesapeake's current entry-level salary. And option three, which is the 4 percent increase, has an associated cost of 24,444,000, which again will place it 1.39 percent higher than Chesapeake's current entry-level salary. These costs also factor in vacancies and the cost of benefits as well. So similar to the unified scale, these are sort of the all-in costs, for lack of a better term. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Paula, and she's going to provide you with the summary of all the information that we have discussed. So thank you. Oh, yeah, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. So in summary, the options provided for the unified pay scale are 11,765,000 and 19,400 and change. Each option includes the cost of moving the employees in grade U seven to $15 an hour, which again aligns with the board's goal of offering a competitive wage for the division's low-wage earners. It also moves the division ahead of the $15 dollar requirement by the state starting in July 1, 2026. This will help you recruit and retain the employees that you have in these, in the U seven pay grade. These costs also include the step all employees on the unified scale would take when implementing either option on July 1st. The teacher pay scale summary costs are outlined on this table for each option and correspond to the percentage increase to entry-level pay. Similar to the unified pay scale summary, each cost includes the step for years of experience, and the percentage for each step remains at 1.5 percent. You'll see again in option, in the unified pay scale, the increase of going to 1 and 1/4 percent and going to 1.5 percent, which was deferred in the last study. So one of the things I want to also add in summary is that the unified and teacher's pay structures are the foundation upon which the school division is able to administer pay and, and pay our teachers and staff in a manner which aligns with your compensation philosophy, which I remember well, and the compass to 2025 strategic framework, which says, quote, "BBCPS places a priority on recruiting, retaining, and promoting a workforce represented of our diverse student population." The options we've presented today address the immediate needs for both structures, the starting rate for our low-wage workers and starting pay for teachers, while also improving the underlying structure in a manner that will further Virginia Beach City Public Schools' competitive position among your peer divisions now and in the future. Under the guidance of the board, these new improvements, coupled with the improvements made last year, present a rising tide that will, in effect, raise all ships within the division and further establish Virginia Beach City Public Schools as an employer of choice and one who pays its workforce in accordance with your values and allows employees to focus on ensuring that every student will, as per your mission, achieve their maximum potential. So Andrew and I thank you very much for listening to us, and we are more than happy to take your questions now.
And if I could add before we enter into the question session with Segal, and of course, I stand ready to address any questions you have. We could not allow this presentation to end without thanking the board for all of the work that you put into place and approved last year for compensation. It was the largest compensation packet ever in the history of Virginia Beach, awarding over $59 million to compensation. So I, I have to applaud that because sometimes we forget, you know, that we saw the largest gains last year and an additional 2 percent just this January. We also recognize that what we have presented today, especially after our CFO, Ms. Pate's presentation, that is aspirational. We wanted, as always, is to put something out there on the table should additional funding become available. In all of the conversations that we've had with Dr. Robertson, we could have easily halted this presentation. He said, move forward because if it's the will of the board, as, as it is his, to put additional funding, should it become available, the compensation, we would. So we wanted you to at least have an idea because it's so easy sometimes for us to rattle off and say 1 percent, 2 percent, 3 percent. But now you can see the cost of each percent that it does make us sometimes have to go back, reevaluate, and adjust. But I, in no way want the board to think that we are not extremely appreciative of everything you put in place. And my favorite graph, and I said this to Segal, was looking at the past year for Virginia Beach with the, I call it the convoluted line to now what happens just by fixing our structure and the fact that, you know, I always say it, I'm looking at Chesapeake all the time. They're our number one competitor in terms of salary, that we had closed that gap tremendously, significantly. And so, thank you. And with that, now we stand prepared to address any questions that you may have.
Well, I can't see, I can't see the board yet, so. Yay. All right, Ms. Martin.
So first of all, thank you to Segal and to you for giving us these options. And of course, it, it does very much depend on, on revenue and, and economic headwinds. One thing I would ask my colleagues to, to really consider is we addressed teacher pay scale, and I know that's really important for retention, but I feel like we really need to get behind a unified pay scale increase for these hourly positions, for some of our assistant positions. So, so that's something I think we should, we should lean toward moving forward, is making sure that those are at, at the lower end of the pay scale, we're really addressing some of those needs, some of the compression in particular for those folks that have stayed in those positions despite so many different opportunities. I mean, Target is paying more than we are, right? And so these are folks that are really committed to our mission, and I think we need to make sure we lean into taking care of those should the funds become available.
Anybody else? I will say, you know, you are right. This was very important, and it, and it was important to show all of this, even though we are facing, we don't know what we're facing right now, but this is so important. I didn't, you know, initially, you kind of feel like, oh, bad timing.
Right.
But, but, you know, we do need to be cognizant of this, and so I'm, I'm glad that you brought this forward, and I thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and thank you to Segal.
Thank you, Segal. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to item D, the PPEA Cost Financing and Staff Recommendations. Welcome, Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you. Before I start, I will say, Mr. Rigs, appreciated your comment today. Full credit goes to our maintenance services team. They're an incredible group. They're the ones that did all that work that's associated with it. So thanks goes to Eric Woodhouse and his team for that.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank them for us.
Will do. Already done. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Weems, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. We have been evaluating the potential benefit of an unsolicited PPA for over two years now. In each step of the process, the PPEA showed promise to potentially provide benefit to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The most recent step in that process was an interim agreement. The interim agreement enabled updates to the educational specifications and the development of 30 percent designs in each of the three buildings. Those 30 percent designs are Virginia Beach City Public Schools, regardless of whether we choose the PPEA route or remain with our status quo approach to new construction. The level of detail captured in the 30 percent designs then allowed the contractor to develop and deliver a guaranteed maximum price. We now have the information we need to deliver a recommendation to the board. Thank you. Here's the GMP. During the course of the interim agreement, we had the opportunity to work with not only our budget team, but also with the city's budget team and Davenport, a financial consulting group the city's been working with to understand the financials of the proposal. There is more than one financial layer that is problematic for the PPEA. That said, we are going to keep this as simple as possible. Staff does not recommend proceeding at this time with the PPEA due to financial challenges. This slide represents one significant challenge, and I'm going to have Ms. Pate break the slide.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So as Mr. Freeman mentioned, we have been working with Davenport Company in their capacity as financial advisor to us as well as the city. We've asked Davenport to complete a capital funding analysis related to the potential PPEA construction project. Davenport was provided with the most up-to-date guaranteed maximum price that has been just shared with you, as well as cash flow estimates related to the PPEA construction project. Davenport has assumed costs are funded in a just-in-time basis, meaning funds are borrowed when they are needed. I will share with you the projected debt service requirements of BBCPS were to move forward with the PPEA construction project based on the guaranteed maximum price of just over $659 million. This slide was provided to us by Davenport. Virginia Beach City Public Schools currently roughly has $332 million of outstanding debt at the beginning of this fiscal year 2024. We repay our existing debt rapidly with a 10-year payout ratio of 74 percent. Virginia Beach City Public Schools currently has a debt service budget of a little over $50 million. In our five-year forecast, that $50 million remained flat. Based on Davenport's analysis, Virginia Beach City Public Schools would technically afford, could technically afford to incur additional debt in the range of $315 million over the fiscal year 2024 through 2031 timeframe without increasing our current debt service budget of approximately $50 million. The guaranteed maximum price of approximately $659 million for the PPA project is over double Virginia Beach City Public Schools' maximum affordability of $315 million. So breaking this down on this graph, the dark green bars represent our existing debt service. Over time, as we make payments, that debt service decreases. You see the flat line, the red line of $50 million representing our current debt service budget. The lighter green bars represent the annual increases in debt service if we were to support not only our general CIP maintenance projects, but also the PPEA construction project. Maximum annual debt service in fiscal year 2032 would be equal to approximately $96 million, which is $46 million above our current debt service budget. In order to fund this, it would require an average And in order to fund this, it would require an average annual increase in the debt service budget of six point five million dollars for seven consecutive years beginning in fiscal year 2026. This is equivalent to a point six seven percent increase annually in the school operating fund budget for those seven consecutive years in addition to all the other items we fund, including ongoing compensation. So as Jack mentioned, I tried to keep this fairly simple so you can see the impact of the PPA construction projects, and now I will turn this back over to Mr. Freeman.
So the next portion of the presentation was developed by the SB Ballard Construction Team to share context related to the guaranteed maximum price. Steve Ballard is here to walk you through the presentation and the way that we designed it is to have him be able to walk through them. There's a question slide. That question slide is intended to be able to engage with Mr. Ballard on any questions he has specific to their portion of the presentation because staff has more things to cover after that portion of the presentation and then we'll be able to take questions related to staff following that. So with that, Mr. Ballard?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Steve Ballard, president of SB Ballard for forty-seven years. But just to give you a general breakdown of it, it's six hundred and fifty-nine million dollars, fifteen million, four hundred and four of it is for the interim agreement, which is about seventy percent complete. Since we just received Davenport's report, you know, we have some projections we need to give the city that we still need to do. Hollow Road Annex was about twenty-eight million dollars. That's to renovate that and upgrade and accommodate it for Princess Anne High School and Bayside High School, which is a seven-year period that they'll be occupying that school and it definitely needs a repair. And that's a new Princess Anne High School at two hundred and thirty-nine million dollars for the replacement of that high school. And then Betty F. Williams is the combination of Bayside Six and Betty F. Williams and then demolition of Bayside Six is about a hundred and twelve million dollars, five hundred and fifty, well, a hundred and twelve million dollars. And that size, that building has increased by about forty thousand square feet, that's the only one there. Bayside High School with a three and a half percent escalation is two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars with just three and a half percent escalation. And, and I, you know, if I listen to everybody, you know, one part of my presentation is show you all actual escalation, things that really have happened just in the two years that we've worked on this proposal to back up numbers because there's been a lot of discussion about that. So that is a, and then Aragona, Bayside Six and the Stormwater Park about five million dollars, which is a total of six hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. Now, when we take the twenty-three, twenty-four CIP and do a escalation of that of the city's average, I mean, the school system, it's, we still think that the, at six hundred and fifty-nine million dollars, it's about a hundred million dollars less than what the CIP is going to be this year. That's based on our numbers. And like I said, all the numbers that we show you here do have three and a half percent escalation in them. And, you know, you'll see as I go through here that part of the benefit is actual cost is probably seven to twelve percent and by Ballard doing this job, you're going to get it guaranteed at three and a half percent, which I'm going to go into more details. The next one's the time costs and savings. This is a big, a very important slide because, you know, just taking Princess Anne High School, we finished that one year early. Based on the GMP, we do have some other options, Betty F. Williams, four years early, and Bayside, eight years early. And I know CIP doesn't justify doing all that by right now, but if you look down at the potential cost of waiting for these schools, you know, you're talking about monthly about a million, four fifty at three and a half percent and yearly about seventeen million, which means a total, if you did the schools based on, you know, over thirty years, you'd be almost, you'd be paying additional billion, eight hundred million dollars for these schools. So we're, you know, we're talking about seven and eight percent, but boy, that's a big number when you add it out. And we do have some alternate schedules that we would, that we're working with the city now that we have Davenport's report. So if you get to the next slide, just Bayside by itself with SB Ballard taking on the risk of three and a half percent of the seven percent that we'll show you, just at that escalation there, you know, for ten years, you're going to pay another hundred million dollars. And then, you know, twenty years, you pay another quarter of a billion dollars. Those are big, big numbers. And we've given you this detail, all these numbers here, we have some great supporting documents that will show you and verify these, they're not whimsy numbers, I've actually got data for them. And then what's, what's a real important slide down here, well, the same slide, 2018, I submitted unsolicited proposal for five new high schools. It took eight years, that, that was the plan in 2018, so they'd be done by '26. And this was the price I proposed for them, you know, a hundred and thirty million for a new Princess Anne, just as we're doing it today. Bayside was a hundred and fifteen million dollars, just as we're doing it today. So you can see just over six years, that's a two hundred and fifty-one million dollar increase. So that's just over the six years. And that proposal was not accepted, but that was a guaranteed maximum price back at that time. So then when I talk about the interim agreement and escalation verification, you know, I've been questioned on by this a lot and you guys have asked for it and council members and the public as well. So I went back between my twenty-two and twenty-four proposal when I first submitted this job about two, submitted in March of twenty-two. This is just a few items on just Princess Anne High School that's gone up, you know, concrete, about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's actual numbers for that and I have quotes for the suppliers, the vendors, stone and sand. The dishwasher went up, you know, fifteen, what was that, thirty-six percent just for the dishwasher in one school. And then the training equipment went from, also went up forty-seven percent just in two years. And all these, I have quotes when I quoted in twenty-two and quotes when we quoted it last month. But here's the big one over here on the right, if you take the HVAC by itself, just the mechanical system, and we built Kellum, okay, so I took the list of equipment that I built in Kellum and we used it as a comparison to what we did at Princess Anne. And we matched the numbers and we said, let's just see what the mechanical into that. We built Kellum, the mechanical system was forty-one dollars a square foot, about thirteen million dollars. Today, Princess Anne is about forty-six million dollars for the same system, geothermal system. That is one huge increase. And I just did a JMU project now that we bid five years ago, we were going to do the mechanical and electrical for eighty-two dollars a square foot. We're starting it now, it's a hundred, a hundred and sixty-three dollars a square foot just for mechanical, like, just to give you an idea. That's, so what I'm saying there is these are actual costs on your projects so we can, you know, we get that question time and time. Well, you know, what is it really? What is it, Mr. Ballard? I was trying to answer those the best I could, all right? One of the other questions was the right size, and I think Mike and Amy did a great job on this. And then I just thought it'd give you a little better illustration there of the back of the house or the gross square foot sizing. So this gives you a little better picture of what truly is the gross square foot versus the grossing factor and, and gives you a better picturesque of it. And we are approximately twenty-nine percent and the state average is anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty, thirty-one, so we're right on it. You know, we, we are building exactly the right size based on industry standards, it's not a lot of bling in this bill, a lot of extra space. The next one, one of the big questions everybody's had is do we give everybody in the moon everything? You know, that's, I mean, I've been, I've been asked that a hundred and fifty times. That's how it started, you know, we, system and I had, Amy did a great job and it said, all right, what do you need to make everything work? And everybody came in, you know, like, like Betty F. Williams, you know, there were a hundred and eighty-some thousand square feet, we reduced that by forty-one thousand square feet. Princess Anne, we've reduced by eighty-eight thousand square feet from what everybody in the world wanted. And then Bayside, we've reduced by seventy-eight thousand square feet and that is a prototypical that we can move to all the sites. Kempsville's going to be a little tight, building will be a little taller there, but we have built these things the right size, right size. That's a huge reduction of square footage and the most important part about that is we still meet the program, the public and staff facility is happy with the building. So we've, we've done it the right way, you know, to the Virginia Beach standards, so we, you know, we're confident on those numbers. Guaranteed maximum price, you know, as I listen to presentations and stuff, you know, like, I hate the Stormwater Project there, you know, they just went up three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. You know, I don't have that benefit on my job, you know, when I give you guys a GMP, that's it. And we agree to order real duty schools and the price, that price will have like a five percent contingency and a three and a half percent escalation. Anything I don't spend on that escalation, the school gets back. Anything past that, me and my son, well, mostly my son loses his inheritance. So, so it is a guaranteed price and that's it. I mean, I can't come to you with, you know, a three hundred million dollar change order. And I've done this, I did it Wise County, I did it in Norfolk Schools for five years and we finished right on the money. And we had some challenges at both schools, you know, Wise County, we moved one of those schools nine times and we still finished on time within our budget after I gave them the GMP out there. So we, you know, with the escalation of three and a half percent and you guys in the city get the benefit of that if we don't spend it. And same thing with the contingency, all of that has to be verified, dispersed and it's given back. And I've done real well with that. Both of my jobs, I've been able to give the owner back. So, you know, we're, we're taking, we're taking a gamble, but when you're buying this much equipment and materials, you could cut a deal with people by buying bulk, you know, multiple units, multiple lighting fixtures, and you can keep your schools typical. Next one. We have gotten almost seven hundred invites that we've sent out, we've got about ninety-nine of local contractors that are, that are giving us pricing and participating on this and about seventy percent of our, our design teams also SWAM certified. And that's an important numbers for, for all of our goals out here. All right, next one. The advantages of the PPA team concept really works well, we're, you know, we got Amy to get everybody what they, you know, what they wanted and Amy reduced it, then the architects reduced it. Then we went back to the public and said, can you live with a little more reduction? That was another two or three percent. We drew it up, took it back, we got everybody, I'd say ninety-eight percent, I'm pretty happy. One or two weren't, but the general, they really were. So that's, that's part of the team concept that really worked well out here. You know, and I've been listening to Davenport today, teachers are important, their pay's even more important. So I'm glad y'all have a gun up there when I come up here with six hundred and fifty million dollars. Good gosh, I wish I could have thrown somebody up here tonight. But, you know, these financial challenges, I have not done a P3 project yet that didn't have a challenge, not one. And I can tell you, this chart here, I know everybody, that, that green looks mighty ghostly, but when we did in Norfolk, it was far worse than that. And we can work with the city and staff and work on that, you know, we just got these projections and we just got our GMP in the middle of December. So, you know, that's what y'all are paying me for, I can, I can help you with that and I have some ideas. Multiple options, you know, we're doing some of that now, you know, rearranging the schools based on cash flow, see what we can do and get it in your CIP and we're working on that right now, very diligent. Now, multiple options about that, that's, when you still look at these numbers here, you know, you say, well, Steve, what do you happen four years from now if you go over, right? Well, it's the GMP, which means, I love, you stole my word today, aspirational, you know, we can never affect the program, we can't affect safety, can't affect the size of the classes. But say we take a job that has eight hundred thousand dollars for the sound panels on it and we had a hundred thousand dollars for the foundation problem, well, you know, maybe we could take a hundred thousand out of the sound panels, won't affect anything, the hallways be a little noisy, but that's how you kind of design to that GMP. You know, things come up during the job, but that's all included in my price and these are kind of smaller things, you know, we haven't really taken any big swipes at the number right now, we're just, you know, put together our numbers, that is a bulk number and we haven't really given the city or school staff yet our big swings at some of these prices. Best value comparisons, we've done a lot of this and I think I've sent you, I've given you guys some of those definitions we provided a little earlier, glad to share those with the public. But meeting the new state guidelines in the last two or three years is really putting a, a whale of a burden on the contracting industry as well as the materials and everything else for the state and the government, it's really regulating the way we treat water and school water on the sites. And we, we've reached all those and get proposed best value suggestions to save funds on that if we, if we have to build them the way we are now. And we've got some good recommendations on that. Alternate pricing, and when I say we're doing that, that's really figuring out the schedule, you know, if we put off school for a year, you know, delay one for two years, whatever, how much is the end result, how much does it cost us by delaying it versus can we meet our CIP and meet the program, you know? So those are options that we're preparing right now for the city. And the trends, you know, I'd just like to tell you that, you know, can you imagine when council and everybody says, you know, if you wait for Bayside at seven percent for thirty years, it's a, a two billion dollar school, one school. I mean, that's a tremendous number for somebody standing up here in a few years and present. And that's it, that's it, and of course, that is a seven percent, but I think inflation over the average, and I know the last school had COVID in it, but you know, it looks like six or seven years, there's always some event, hurricane, tornadoes, cyclones, nuclear power plant, nuclear power plant moving down, you know, it's, it's always something like that. So with that, I have a lot of details, a lot of support for this, if you guys want anything else, I'd be glad to provide it for you. With that, I think we're in the questions for me, Jack? Anybody?
I can't tell. Is, should I? There you go. Okay, Mr. Cal.
Thank you for your report and your information. One of the comments that we hear often from the community is, gee whiz, what in the world is these guys doing with the costs associated with these buildings, especially when we make comparisons to other high schools throughout the state that may have recently been built and SB Ballard may have even been involved in the construction of a high school. I think it's in the Henrico County area as an example. And it was given as an example of similar footprint to Princess Anne High School, similar student body. But if Princess Anne High School has a cost of two hundred and forty million, the Henrico School was often referenced as something for only maybe eighty or ninety million. And if in fact that's an accurate description of the comparison between two options, the obvious question that it begs is, why?
Well, Virginia Beach standards is a lot higher than what these other schools sense and systems are presenting, you know, and that's why people love moving to Virginia Beach is the schools are a lot better, education's better, you have CTE in all your schools, which is really great. I went to Maury, you know, had to drive the military highway for CTE school. I was one of those distributor education kids, but I turned out okay. But, you know, y'all have that in your facilities, each one of these, and that's, that's, that's a big square footage. And I think Mike and Amy did a great job explaining the difference in the programs in those schools that we did, you know, on the ninth. And, and I can, I'll be glad to come back and tell you square footage wise, you know, how much it is a little difference. And you also got to look at, what's very important is like you take Kellum, we built that on a hundred acres. I mean, that was the greatest job in the world because, you know, we had sixty acres to do whatever we wanted. And your schools, you know, we're building very tight site, thirty-three acres, twenty-nine acres. So that drives that cost per acre way up, that flows into that cost per square foot. Of course, you're not spreading it over, you know, that site work gets condensed in a lot of, and you're working a lot smaller area and I've still got to need all the stormwater treatment systems too. But the biggest thing is the programs, you guys offer a lot more programs and I think Mike and Amy hit on that real well the last time.
Are you talking about inside the school building itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Y'all do have a lot, a lot of different, different programs in those other schools and I did build one of them and I just priced one last week and.
I don't need to put words in your mouth then, what you're giving me the impression is it's an apples to orange comparison.
That's correct, without a doubt. And I think Amy and, and Mike presented that pretty well on, on the ninth and, you know, we can, we can make that, I, you know, I'm more of a chart guy, I'm not a chart guy, I'm more of a picturesque guy, so, and I could show you that. As a matter of fact, the, I've sent y'all a package on definitions and stuff, some renderings. I think it's real important, you know, I could, I very easily, you look at the CTE school, you know, and I discussed this with Amy and Mike, you know, we stacked the CTE schools, I mean, classes, you know, and that costs a little bit more. I said, why don't we I said, why don't we put them on the first floor? And Amy had a great point. She said, the education system now, they like to keep those kids, you know, right there in that system, you know, in that area. And then they can also use those rooms for, you know, advanced technology, robots, whatever, and keep them there instead of everybody coming from one end of the school to the other. And Amy and Mike got a little sell on me for that one. But when I said, okay, so, and that's the national trend and that's the way the educators like it, a lot better, keeping them stacked like that. So that is truly, I mean, the, the school we just finished, well, one thing, they got ten percent of the CTE classes y'all did. So, and, and the additional facilities outside, I think that's a who shot John number. You know, we proposed, the governor wanted to build one out of Lake Taylor and worked with you guys on it. You know, everybody thought it'd be eighty, ninety million dollars. Two hundred thousand square feet, it was three hundred million dollars six years ago. So, and plus you gotta pay the bus everybody there. That's a, it's a fallacy in today's world to ship all the kids around. It just because the buses and, and, and the new facilities cost so much. Because when you build a true full-fledged bulk out two hundred thousand square foot CTE school, it's expensive, without a doubt. So I think, I think your programs are great. We, we, we took what everybody wanted and put it in the building and then reduced it and reduced it. You know, Jack won't let me bring it, but I have a great board that's got sticky pads of every classroom and every area in there. And I wanted to pull up and say, all right, y'all pick which one you want to take out and we'll do it. Yeah, it's a very great illustration and I will use that one day soon. I spent a lot of money. But, you know, these people that, one of these classes and educators and everything are just, just, you know, this is what they wanted. You know, is there a more competitive way to do it? You know, that's something the school system needs to decide. You know, what do you want to do without? You know, you got evening sports, you know, one of the biggest thing I remember was the coach at Princess Anne saying he couldn't even get on the field late fifteen at night. So his kids don't go up to nine forty-five, you know, because it's, it's so, so busy. You know, it's just, you know, there's, the education system in Virginia Beach is top notch. And if you want to keep it that way, you are a little better, a little higher standard and a, and a lot nicer facilities. And that's just up to you guys, what you, you know, what direction you want to give us. We have, we took what everybody wanted, we reduced it, reduced it, then we took the facilities and staff and said, all right, now we reduce it some more and then we price it up. And now we could, you know, if you guys say, you know, what, Steve, what can we do? That is my job. That's what you're paying me for in this interim agreement is to bring you some options and alternate pricing, which we can do that.
Ms. Martin?
I, I, quite a few things here. First of all, I am a fan of the PPA process. I understand Senator De Staff was one of the first sponsors of making that possible for public entities. I, I'm a state employee. I've seen that in practice in Richmond. It, it also brings economic stability to our community in which you could have a Mason who says, all right, I know I've got a four-year project here, here and here. I've got employment for my staff for the next, next twelve years, but I am gravely concerned about these costs. I, I work on the eastern shore sometimes. I know the Northampton County High School renovation, just a renovation came in at over a hundred million, not even a new build, but.
Bid three times.
Yes, yes, billed multiple times. Every time it went up, the lowest bid actually ended up increasing. But I'm also thinking about, do we need to start looking at renovation addition? For instance, I believe y'all contracted for the Baton Arts and Letters at ODU. You built a building around the existing, existing building and added to that, which means we would need to add parking garages to our high schools, right? In order to get that additional land footprint.
And there's a lot of things, you know, daylighting too, yeah.
Just in fairness, I don't know if that question is a good one for the, for a contractor to answer what we want to do as Virginia Beach City Public Schools as a method to solve that problem.
Right.
I think we would probably want to wrestle with that one first before we bring a.
Okay.
Love everything they're doing, but there's probably a step in the process that we're missing if we have that conversation.
Okay, that sounds good. And I do know that in our summer retreat, we're looking at, you know, a decline in enrollment, you know, building use capacity. One thing I do, I do want to mention is that I come from a European family. I'm first generation American. One of my friend's houses was built in nine hundred fourteen centuries ago. And so I, I, you know, just a comment, not a question. I think we need to take a look at what's possible with what we have moving forward. But again, you know, this is a chicken and egg. Prices are increasing, do we lock it in, right? I, I don't know the answer and, and I really enjoyed the, the charrettes and everything that we did with that. Provided there's a funding source from the state and feds, this could be possible in my opinion. But if there is not, I, I don't see it possible.
Wonderful. I would recommend for those type of comments, we save those ones to the, after the remainder of the staff brief, because that will have different context related to everything that you're talking about. So this one is just an opportunity to talk related to the S.B. Ballard portion.
And we did that at Norfolk when we had the five schools. I was able to get the last school financed by the federal government by eighty percent on a fund that just because we built a couple of federal buildings. And, and the city of Norfolk said, I don't think they'll do it here. And I said, well, let's try. So, you know, that is the advantage of P three when you're talking about finding additional ways. We, we're good at that, that's what we did.
Okay, Ms. Weems?
Yes, thank you. Well, we're definitely on economically challenged times. And so I think that, I mean, kind of what Mr. Callen said, our world is we're at the grocery store and people come up to me and pretty much say, are y'all crazy? These buildings are huge. You're increasing Bayside by sixty percent. You're increasing, you know, are y'all crazy? You know, did you see the price tag of that, Carolyn? And so that's a big hurdle to get over. And I, and I don't know if this was you, Mr. Ballard, or us, or a combination. But when you tell the community, just give us anything that you want, and then you're gonna have to whittle it back down. Because I remember, I, I think in the original, not contract, I guess maybe the contract, the square footage was out there like very reasonable. It wasn't four hundred and twenty-six thousand. It was more like for Princess Anne, I think it was three hundred and thirty thousand. And for Bayside, it was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so, so I was hoping that then we would take that and whittle that down a little bit. But now we've got this huge building, which then you said you took some off. But now the square footage is still bigger than our initial, you know, recommendations. And again, I don't know if those came from you or from us or whatever. So I just think that the, I, I mean, I don't know how we're going to afford this. And I still don't know why these buildings are so big. I think that there's some efficiencies that we can have. And I understand the CTE, I'm real, you know, involved with that with workforce development. But if, if the money's not there and if prices has, have gone so far up, you have to live within your means. I mean, if somebody came and said, Carolyn, how do you want to redo your house? Oh, I would have a sauna in there, I would have an indoor pool, I would have, you know, a cold bath. I mean, I would have everything, but that's not realistic in these economic times. So I think that we just kind of started off ballooning this thing. And now we're, I just, I'm disappointed that I didn't see a lowering of square footage from that initial, you know, amount.
Okay, yes, ma'am, I think that one's for me.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard, then.
The entire last brief was focused on being able to present and understand the why behind it. So I'll do the short wrap up of that. School Board directives to do educational specifications is the first step in the process. Because of recognition that the educational specification that we had was over a decade old. They said, first thing you do is you go on an interim agreement is develop educational specifications. And that's within the values and priority systems of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And that's what was accomplished. I understand that, I don't think anybody likes the number. When they look at the number, nobody likes it. Related to the comments that keep coming up about, hey, we started off too big and we didn't whittle it down. That was the exact process is you go ahead and you say, all right, what is it that we need? And Mr. Ballard described it here. It was described in the last briefing we had, it was the process that was, was used to whittle that down, which included a meeting on August first, twenty twenty-three, where we took basically everybody out. It was the senior leadership group and the senior experts in those. And we said, make it as small as is reasonable to meet our program needs. And that's where we are. Can you make it smaller? Yes, but we need direction from the board on what values and priorities to readjust.
Okay. Last speaker, Ms. Manning. Some of us have been here since ten, so go ahead. Ms. Manning?
I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute. So I share Ms. Weems' concerns regarding the size. And city council, when they approved the PPA resolution, they specifically gave some directives of what they wanted to see. They wanted to see scalable options. They wanted to find deficiencies of size and scale. And I share Ms. Weems' concerns that I, I was flabbergasted by the initial square footage that was proposed. And then it went even farther up. And, you know, I heard Mr. Ballard say that the public was giving input on the square footage. But I was in these meetings and not once did I ever hear anyone talk about what the square footage was, nor was I ever given any numbers. And I, I shared my concerns about the size and not knowing what this was going to cost, and that was never addressed. So I'm very concerned that we haven't met the requirements of city council, city council's resolution that they approved to find efficiencies of size and scale and to provide scalable options.
Okay, anybody else? You, I'm sorry? Oh.
So, Ms. Melonick, if I could, I'm saying this because I didn't hear a question from the last one. So here's a recommendation. There's been three comments from the school board that were not related to Ballard. So I'm going to recommend that we complete the presentation so that when, we can then have these discussions. It feels like the board is ready to move on and have other discussions that are not questions related to Ballard. Is that acceptable?
For right now?
Yes.
And how, how, how long will this take?
The remainder of the presentation, five minutes?
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I'll try and keep on, keep on track. So, all right, the PPA process. So in order to move forward, following the interim agreement, we needed to have a staff recommendation to move forward. We needed to have the school board to approve that recommendation. Then we needed city council to approve. With everything that we've done, it needed to meet a series of wickets. It has not met the staff wicket for recommending proceeding with the PPA. So there is no further requirement from the school board or city council. We remain on the path of the adopted CIP that was approved last year. Staff doesn't recommend moving forward at this, at this time, based on what was stated earlier. So as we prepare for this budget cycle, we need your guidance to develop and propose an executable CIP. As we've been sharing with you over the last two years, there isn't much good news. We've told you that the CIP is sinking, the CIP ship is sinking. And we're on course to lose approximately ninety million dollars over the, since two thousand nine, over the course of the six-year CIP. Half of that is new construction loss, half of that is maintenance loss. So about four hundred fifty million dollars loss in buying power on maintenance projects like HVAC, re-roofing, foundations. And that's resulted in our inability to keep up with the replacement cycles. We can no longer continue on that course. Additionally, it's currently projected, in the current projected financial environment, it is mathematically impossible to achieve full funding for Bayside High School. As we prepare for this year's proposed CIP, we intend to allocate more than half of our annual allocations to maintenance. New construction will receive the balance. To support maintenance projects of our school, we intend to shift current appropriations out of Bayside High School to support HVAC and roof replacements. This shift in funding to maintenance projects with greater than fifty percent of our annual allocations will effectively delay getting to full funding for Prince Anne High School, which is currently first in priority for construction. This will hurt because every year that we delay on a project that size will cost fifteen million dollars to be able to get the same value. But getting to full funding may not be the primary challenge. Ms. Pate talked to you about the challenge related to debt service for the PPA. The challenge also extends to our status quo capital program. Our debt service limit is currently level across the six-year CIP at fifty million. This slide shows our projected maximum affordability with a fifty million dollar debt service. Dark green shows the existing debt service that we're paying down over time, things we already bought. The light green bars show the numbers, and the numbers on the right show the additional debt service we can incur by a year. We have a lot of maintenance work to do. We just briefed you that under the PPA, Prince Anne High School is currently projected at about two hundred and forty million dollars. In short, our debt service may not support proceeding with Prince Anne High School. Especially when we're trying to get back on track with maintenance projects. We will continue to work with Davenport to see what's in aroma possible. And before I advance this slide, take a look at the values in the far right-hand column. That's the sixty-one million, the thirty-two point nine, and so on. So here's our current adopted CIP. Notice the funding level moving forward and that it remains level. Also notice that the majority of our annual funding are from charter bonds, from public facility revenue bonds. About forty-seven million next year and forty-four million in the years after that. Those will all have, if they are used, impact on that debt service. And here's what I mentioned to you earlier about Bayside High School. We intend to shift the appropriations to date from Bayside High School to HVAC and roofing. There's a little over twenty million dollars in that project. It is dead money sitting in the Bayside High School project right now. Bayside High School is mathematically achievable with our current conditions. And we need that money over the next one to three years to support the underfunded HVAC and re-roofing projects. For the proposed CIP moving forward, we intend to remove all future funding from the Bayside High School project. And that money will be moved to those projects. We're setting up a ten-year recovery plan for our HVAC maintenance and our re-roofing. So that leaves us with Prince Anne High School and Betty F. Bayside Six. And we've told you that with our current debt service, it may not be possible to get to Prince Anne High School, particularly if we're going to prioritize maintenance. But if you look in the appropriations to date column for both Prince Anne High School and Betty F. Williams, Bayside Six, something can be possible related to Betty F. Williams and Bayside Six. So here's the opportunity for guidance in the comments that you are going to make. We are going to be wrestling with a problem that is not solvable in the way that we hope it's going to be solvable. But there are things that can be done. So pieces of feedback, we're requesting general guidance, but specifically related to, and I know we're going to probably have to come back to this at a later time, but Bayside High School, that we, that's going to be a visual challenge for everybody. It's needed, but when we defund and shift funds over, which we need for maintenance, that's going to have an impact. And we're going to need guidance on whether we keep that in there with all zeros or something else. And we need guidance and feedback related to, do you want us to consider a shift in priority to move Betty F. Williams and Bayside Six to the number one priority spot over Prince Anne High School? So with that, that concludes the brief. This is the opportunity to be able to hear from you and get feedback, but I know that we have a time constraint.
We can, you can come back.
Come back.
Okay. All right, and with that, we adjourn for now. We'll reconvene at six o'clock.